Welcome, everyone. I'd like to open the public hearing on Local Law Number One of 2023, a local law entitled "A Local Law Providing Real Property Tax Exemptions for Volunteer Firefighters and Ambulance Workers Pursuant to Section 466A of the Real Property Tax Law." And at this time, I'll let you sign your notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that there has been duly submitted to the county legislature of the County of Green on the 17th of January 2023, Local Law Intersectory Number One of 2023, a local law entitled "A Local Law Providing Real Property Tax Exemptions for Volunteer Firefighters and Ambulance Workers Pursuant to Section 466A-A of the Real Property Tax Law," being enacted by the county legislature of the County of Green as follows. Summary of Proposed Local Law Number One of 2023. Pursuant to this local law, the County of Green proposes to adopt the real property tax exemptions provided for volunteer firefighters and emergency medical personnel in accordance with Section 466-A of the Real Property Tax Law. Real property owned by a enrolled member of an incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance service, or such a enrolled member and spouse residing in the County of Green shall be exempt from taxation to the extent of 10% of the assessed value of such property for county purposes, exclusive of a special assessment. Applicants must meet certain qualifications and eligibility requirements. The full text of this proposed Local Law Number One of 2023 is available for review in the office of the clerk of the Green County Legislature, Suite 408, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, 12414, and on the Green County website, Notice is further given that the county legislature of the County of Green will conduct a public hearing on the Aporus Senate Local Law on the 6th of February 2023 at 6:00 PM in the Legislative Meeting Room Office, County Office Building 411 Main Street, 44, Catskill, New York, at which time all persons interested in the subject matter thereof will be heard concerning the same date of January 2023. Tammy L. Chavillo, Acting Clerk, Green County Legislature.
The purpose of the public hearing is to hear comments from the public regarding Local Law Number One, 2023, a local law entitled "A Local Law Providing Real Property Tax Exemptions for Volunteer Firefighters and Ambulance Workers Pursuant to Section 466A of the Real Property Tax Law." Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to Local Law Number One of 2023, a local law entitled "A Local Law Providing Real Property Tax Exemption for Volunteers, Firefighters, and Ambulance Workers Pursuant to Section 466A of the Real Property Tax Law?" Just ask, raise your hand if you're recognized. When you stand, please state your name for the record. With that, we will begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to Local Law Number One of 2023, a local law entitled "A Local Law Providing Real Property Tax Exemptions for Volunteer Firefighters and Ambulance Workers Pursuant to Section 466A of the Real Property Tax Law"? Any other questions or comments or anything? That one, I'll answer.
I've been in a fire company for 65 years. Started when I was two. Anyway, my question is, I'm obviously receiving LoSa from Catskill Fire Village, but I'm eligible for this 10% also. In addition.
This one is on county property tax. What you're getting, that's a service program through your fire district service program from Catskill Village. Catskill Village. First, we covered the whole area. Based on the Catskill Village. So it's more of a service program. Right, there was a section that's a law. No diminution of current benefits. Yeah, there's no diminution of that, but I don't know. I don't know enough about LoSa to say qualifications of that. Yeah, I don't know if it qualifies as then not being considered volunteer. I think that's where maybe the decision side would be. My gut would tell me it does not affect it, but I'm not sure with this LoSa standpoint. Right? It's under general this law. Probably in fire district law or fire. Maybe. Well, I'm just looking at that. This, what we're looking at here that's written as our draft of law is based off of some other laws that have been passed in the local area. Albany County, one of the resident counties, basically pieces. I put this together. But since it wasn't passed until December, it kind of went through pretty quick. So hopefully, everybody's ready for this. It would be two years of service, a minimum of two years of service. Could have gone as five, minimum. I did have a question from another resident of Baltimore. Wanted to know actually. Lives in the town of Greenville, but volunteers in the town of Baltimore. How does that affect, then, his property tax exemption? State Local Law, it says city, town, or village, does not say county. Any insight there, Ray?
I'm going to refer him to his municipal attorney and his assessor for that clarification. I just watched a webinar put out by Fasney on the 24th, I believe it was. Just watched that this afternoon. Their opinion that that attorney for Fasney expounded on that exact situation. He says, yes, they're eligible. The way I interpret the law and the way my county directors across the country have interpreted the law, or their useful attorneys have interpreted the law, no, they are not eligible.
My understanding is that you must live in the fire district that you serve.
That was correct. But if you listen to the webinar that Fasney put on and it's now put out on YouTube, that's not what I said right up the bar. I don't agree with that. I agree with our interpretation. Yeah, I'm not sure that what the law actually turned out to be is really what Fasney anticipated. Fasney's pushed for this for years. What wound up coming out here, while it's a good thing for the volunteers, just pays the cost on for the rest of the property taxpayers having difficulty. Yeah, I guess that's the one thing I would expand on, you know, since our discussion in December on this is there is no effect to the tax levy. The effect is just wherever exemption, like all exemptions, is just redistributing that levy to a smaller tax base.
The other things I would expand on, where you mentioned, we basically went with the minimums in the law for the maximums. Look at it. So two, because you could die between two and five years. You can drop anywhere between 1% and 10%. And we opted in our local law, the way it's written, that 20 years of service would entitle you to a lifetime benefit and also to your unremarried spouse if you were to die and had 20 years of service, or if you were in line of duty death, had five years of service and be able to continue. And also, we are allowing. Yeah, the 20-year exemption, you just have to live within the cap. So if you were a firefighter in Catskill, decided to move to Carroll in your, after you retired from the fire service, but you've had that 20 years of service in Catskill, you're allowed to continue the exemption for county purposes in Carroll, town purposes in Carroll, if Carroll has the local law, and the school district that you could be in, it all. There's so many moving parts here with each taxing jurisdiction, including the fire districts themselves, which that's a legal question for them to ask their fire district attorney as to how do they pass a resolution. There's a question over whether they pass a resolution to exempt themselves from 10% of fire tax. We exempted special assessments, but we don't have any special assessments in Green County. I do have one town that has written specific language in their law to exclude special districts. If it's silent, it excludes special districts. So unless they name the special district. So what they, what one of their municipal attorney recommended that they put excluding special districts. So there's all different ways this is coming down. We don't know where it's going.
Yeah, and there's those of us who reside in Green County and our school districts are in all the county or the county, not that we had it anyway. If that school district doesn't adopt it. Has any school district said they're going to adopt it?
I haven't heard any that said they would. I've heard before that scheduled public hearings. WAJ has scheduled a public hearing. Catskill Central has scheduled a public hearing. I believe Greenville. I explained them, but I don't know if they scheduled it for this public hearing. And we're maybe that. But we're not really sure. Towns, Kuppsacki has a public hearing coming up. I think Wyndham has a public hearing coming up. That's the only town specifically. The Catskills, February 8th.
Yeah, that was my next thing to bring up, the way that we have our setup here. This law takes effect immediately upon filing. I mean, what's the ramification here? Can we move our date out to the 1st of January as an effective date as opposed to immediately upon filing? 1st of January 24, correct? They would not be eligible for the exemption on the 2023 assessment roll. Or school tax first, school or county cap. 23 is already out. Oh, that's 22 assessment roll that we extend taxes from 23. Okay, that was my question. So the actual status state is March 1st, 2023. So then for us, for it to be effective on our county property taxes for the 1st of 24, we would need to pass this now so that assessors have the rules done in March of this year for next year's taxes. Correct. Which is where a big problem is going to become. All these taxable districts have to have their information. The verifications from all these fire districts or fire companies or whoever it is by.
There again, the state has provided the 466-A volunteer application. Fasney is recommending and have actually produced a mock-up. I don't have access to their actual website to get it. They've done a mock-up of a certification that fire districts and companies can use and ambulance companies. And their recommendation clause of what's going on, there's so many jurisdictions, is that each individual firefighter or ambulance worker can get that certification signed. Be too much work on. I'm going to fall on the side of my assessors. Think about this. There's potential for a max of 1,200 exemptions coming in in a very short period of time, you know? So even for, you know, town in Catskill, let's say, to have to process and review 16 exemption, new exemption applications that they've never had to before and make sure that they have everything in place. It'd be nice if they received it as one application, that certification with the application. That's a, and I thought that was a great idea from Fasney saying, let's make it simple on the taxing jurisdiction that's going to have to.
So we should leave it as what we want it effective for county town taxes 2024. Because I noticed Albin County set their date as January 1st of 24. And that's why I asked.
Yes, but it would have to be effective now for by March. The law would have to be in place by March of this year.
For each jurisdiction.
Correct.
How many could do ours?
Correct.
But every other jurisdiction.
Right, and so if nobody's really sure how this is going to work within the software that everybody uses, but you can set up exemptions to be county only, town only, school only, county town, county town, school. So if the county passes and a school doesn't, they would be eligible for a 10% exemption on whatever taxing jurisdiction has passed the local law or a resolution in their school district. And, but then the question comes is, and this is what the comment I'll make is to the firefighters and ambulance workers, is be careful of your benefit. Don't think that 10% of your assessed valuation and the tax savings will override if you are taking the state income tax credit would be more. Chances are that if it's just county and town pass, it's not more than the $200.
Correct. Jim, is Ashland Ambulance paid or volunteer?
That's paid.
It is paid, yes. So I don't think we have a volunteer ambulance for in the county. I think everybody is.
Not everybody in the mountain top page.
I wasn't sure what the other ones made about.
Rescue Squad and Tanner's, that's it. Tanner's will respond to your rescue squad.
Okay. Yeah, there's, I know there's a lot of volunteer first responding, but as far as transporters, I think they're all. Find your name.
I found a lot. Sure, it's a good time to interpret, but to answer the question without giving legal advice on the question, I think it's going to come down to whether the particular fire district's LoSa is compliant and consistent with that of the recommendations in general municipal law. And if they should, based on Section 8 of this law, there should be no diminution of the current benefits you like. That answers your question.
So if Catskill Fire, then follow the recommendations by law. It should not diminish this.
And if not, the fire districts have to amend their LoSa point system to be consistent with general.
Yeah, couldn't be more clear. It really, it really didn't help much on this one. Say it, but they could have done this all money during just increasing $200 tax credit and making a lot easier on everybody except for me. Then they would have the bill instead of property taxpayers. Anybody else? Have any, any other questions or comments with regards to Local Law Number One of 2023? Oh, and what's? What's? To put it this year in quotes. And we'll do the special county services next.
Special County Services meeting called to order at 6:21. We have one proposed action item calling on the state of New York to continue to pass through Federal Affordable Care Act Enhanced Federal Medicaid Assistant Percentage Funds. I would like to rule that.
Chairman Blumer, I just have a couple of questions on that. So what gives the state the authority to then take these funds?
That's an excellent question. I'm not a lawyer. I'm going to perhaps call on Kyra to come up here as well. We have had, I have had two long discussions Friday and today with NISAC. I guess there's the intent of the law, then there's the language of the law. This cost sharing, a lot of this was predicated on ACA, American Portability Act. And the intent of the law, and if I'm wrong, was that this Fed would continue to pass monies down to local communities to bear a brunt of the cost. For years, that was done, and then an audit was conducted to make sure that the final balancing was made in the counties and received a final payment for that fiscal year. That auditing stopped in 2017. That's a state action. And they just basically sat on the balance of funds that should have been transferred to counties. I'll let Kyra outline the dollar amount to that. But now this budget proposal has just announced, basically, any of that money that's been sitting is now swept into the state budget and going forward, we'll never see. There are other changes too, I believe, and I'll, I next give you a downer.
I think last year they caught up with some ones, right?
Yeah, but they always get the 20%. We never got the reconciliation of 1%, what Sean was talking about. So, so in reality, just so everybody knows, my budget briefing is tomorrow. So we got lots of data from the budget book. I do have two slides. We have two slides. Nope, no, two slides. Oh, my fun game, you don't have them. Okay, so anyhow, so I will let you, let you know what we found out very quickly. On page 84 of the executive budget briefing book, there's line items for federal, state, and local shares. Toward the end of the column, and it's a very innocent-looking slide, and I'm calling this the biggest robbery we've ever seen. Because Charlie, you're going to, we need your checkbook to write out the final number that we're going to need tonight, I do believe. So slide, it takes me years, and all of a sudden, in 23 to 24, the local share is going from 7.9 to 8.9. I'm talking about billions, nine zeros. Charlie, I need nine zeros. So.
I haven't got that much cash.
The 7.9 to 8.9 is sitting in that chart. The question is, what does that really mean to us? So we got to the language, and there's only a couple lines in the language because we don't have all the details. This is what it says. According to the DOB's Executive Budget Financial Plan, the state expects to utilize the entirety of the Enhanced Federal Medicaid Assistance Percentage, which is the EFMAP. And I've stood here multiple times, and I talk about EFMAPs, and there's currently two. I'm talking about the one that we've had in statute since 2012, not the pandemic EFMAP. So they're looking to take the savings to offset the growth in Medicaid costs borne by the state rather than in the counties. That share off the tables automatically $624 million. Okay, so what does that mean to us? How upset should we be? Okay, the statutory cap in 2012 going forward is $10 million. And lots of change behind the $10 million. The budget figure that I used, because we had the two FMAPs, and we budgeted very conservatively when Sean and I sat. We didn't know how long the pandemic was going to go, so I was really looking at the first quarter. Now, according to the federal government, once it ends, we go to the end of the quarter. In reality, we should have the second FMAP to the end of July. What the governor is trying to do, she's not talking about the pandemic FMAP. She's talking about the statutory FMAP that we've been using all these years. So we budgeted here in Green a little over $9 million in our current budget. So that means my weekly share, I budgeted $175,401. Every week, the treasurer's office writes out that check and we send that to Albin. If I need to go back to the statute over the $10 million, the weekly share is $193,515. That doesn't sound that bad. The difference there is $18,114. The problem is just 52 weeks. So the number, Charlie, checkbook, $941,928. So I'm going to be short over $941,000 if this doesn't change. I can't explain what's going to happen for the first quarter. We don't know what we're getting, what we're not getting. But at this point, this is the biggest shift in monies we have ever seen.
What if we just keep sending the original amount we've always sent? And said, you're getting state. Are all the counties do this? It doesn't matter.
What they'll do is, because we've seen this before, they will zero out other claims. There's lots of claims to county government. They'll zero them out, whether it's in child welfare, whether it's to providers. And then that becomes extremely problematic to the point where we don't even need to be able.
No matter from sales tax. Rather than sending us X, they'll send us Y, and they'll make up the money that way. Because the money, it starts there and comes here.
So what you're suggesting.
It's generated here, goes there.
Good point.
Supposedly get.
Good point.
That the ramification of this one line, this one program is absolutely frightening. There's no way Sean can keep the sales tax. We have many other programs that are dependent on that, like raising age. We get one child in there, that would be 100% local cost that we don't keep within our caps. There's so many other statutes that are out there that if this happens, it's pretty scary.
Are we joining other counties on this?
All 62 of them are passing this resolution.
Good. What have we heard from our two United States senators?
Well, that's a good question. I think someplace in my office, I have a quote from Senator Schumer that says, "This FMAP contribution down to county should, because of ACA, should continue for perpetuity." So we should not be having this reduction. It's a pass. Remember, it's coming from the Fed, from the state, and that's right. And, but, there was the intent of the law, then there's the language of the law. NISAC today believes that the way, the actual verbiage of the law is that we would not have a constitutional issue against the state for that keeping this one. This is according to NISAC today. This is the biggest transfer of state obligations to the counties in the last 25.
And what if we then say we're only going to commit to obligations that are funded?
Again, we operate because the state created. They hold the keys to the kingdom.
So what you want to say is, we're looking for people not to be silent. We're looking for people to be.
Screaming.
Yeah, to be very upset. Because if he needs to put that line item to $10 million, that'll be at the detriment of, I'll pick on the sheriff, the sheriff's department and every other department sitting in here tonight. Because there's no way he's going to be able to fund that. And those conversations are going to get really ugly.
Would it hurt to write a letter, also like Mike is saying to the senators?
Oh, trust me.
Even your congressman.
Those are other places. The Yankees probably not dry on half.
But even if everybody in here makes a phone call, just asking for a call back and let them know the displeasure of how they're misappropriating the monies they put in place to pass to their own states that they represent.
And you have the local press here. They should be getting.
And you have the local press here, they should be getting quotes from Senator Schumer and Senator Jill Brand as well.
So, so in 2016, the feds came into the council room, Len Wall was my director of the state services, they specifically only wanted county people in the room, they wanted me to guarantee, so they could go back to the federal government to say that we were getting the pass-through of those dollars. So that did happen in 2016. Senator Schumer was responsible for some of those visits. But it did happen to, I believe, at least four counties within the state.
I think Democratic Senator Schumer is rolling over for the Democratic governor of New York.
Do what noted.
So, so it's pretty shocking, so that's why we wanted to deliberate, so you're shocked as we are. More, more details to come, but pretty scary, I've never seen anything like this. These numbers are absolutely incredible.
That's scarier than the winters that make people move out in New York.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second this resolution. Kyra, could you please email us brief talking points? I talked to groups on occasion, I'm sure many of the other legislators do as well, so we can spread the word on this.
Actually, to go on NISAC's website, they have a whole.
Yeah.
What I can have to do is, is I, is I, it's really simplified, because we could spend hours on the two FMAPs and how we got there and what all happened. But technically, what a weekly share is, what our obligation is, what we're currently budgeted, what would it look like, and how we came up with that number. We're hoping for this year that that will be the worst-case scenario, okay? So we're looking for that number to get a lot better.
Yes. Now, after the call today, like we have in our own budget formulation, once the, once a budget is presented, it has a period of time where the executive can amend it before it gets to the final legislation, which then has to be amended by a vote in the legislature. NISAC's push right now is to get the governor to make this change before it gets to that date, because of the impact. And this is only one of the impact that the state budget is proposing to the detriment of county government. The enralling procedure is totally being forfeited. So that when we have tax exemption, tax foreclosure sales, the way the bill is written now is that any positive cash flow is to be returned to the owner of the property. They don't take into consideration those properties that sell for less than the value of taxes owed, or properties that have environmental contamination. We have properties in the county that we foresee coming to us by default, which could cost us billions of dollars. Right now, we would lose all that ability to maintain a cash flow in order to entertain a correction in order for us to resell the property. And that's affecting all 62 counties again. That, that goes to the point of, this is represents the biggest shift from state to counties in 25 years.
Any other questions before I run off or before you throw me out?
And that's why things are open now, it's the same right now in their session.
All right, I moved it. We have a second from Handel and Rivera, legislators Handel and legislator Rivera, who else? Anybody else want to second it?
Second it.
Seconded by all? All by all. Have a vote. All in favor? Anybody opposed? That's Carrie. Okay. 634, Special County Services meeting is adjourned. Thanks, Karen.
That's a lot of pressure.
Yeah.
Give everything to freeloaders.
62, there's gonna be a change.
It's gotta be happy. Money's going to illegal aliens that have entered our state for the last two plus years for their health care.
Okay, I'll call Special Finance Committee, meeting order, one item. Calling on the state of New York to continue to pass through Federal Affordable Care Act Enhanced Federal Medicaid Assistance Percentage Funds.
One of this.
Davis. Seconded.
The whole committee in the.
Over. Yes, myself. Favor.
Hi.
Oh, sounds like it's Carrie. That's all we have for.
Listen to it, Karen. My name.
Second. What was the second?
Nice and big, so you can read it.
Thank you. That was quick. You lose control. It didn't lose control.
But he kept still.
Call Special West Link for meeting number one for the year. Order.
United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Directly into items that are on the agenda for the site. Item is motion number one of 2023, a law providing real property tax intentions for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers for certain portions of the real property tax law. Thank you. Was there a second? I have a motion. Second. The board?
Yeah.
I guess go across the board, everyone's gonna second that one. Hey, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Oh, that's right, this is a roll call.
Legislator Davis.
Aye.
Legislator Handel.
Aye.
Legislator Hooper.
Aye.
Legislator Lake.
Aye.
Legislator Lennon.
Yes.
Legislator Lucas.
Aye.
Legislator Rivera.
Yes.
Legislator Martinez.
Of course.
Legislator Oba.
Yes.
Legislator Dorrington.
Yes.
Legislator Tru.
Yes.
Legislator Blumer.
Yes.
Legislator Buich.
Aye.
Chairman Leder.
Aye, and I would like to thank very much departments for working very diligently in the last month for this to happen.
Mr. Chairman, we have 10,000 yeses and no during the. Resolution number 54-23, calling on the state of New York to continue to pass through Federal Affordable Care Act Enhanced Federal Medicaid Assistance Percentage Funds. Moved by legislator Blumer, and seconded by legislator Handel, Lake, Lennon, Lucas, Rivera, Oba, Tru, and Chairman Leder.
Second, sir. Dorrington. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's Carrie. For that, this is a special meeting. Further to address, and I will adjourn special meeting. Our regular meeting. I agree.
I want to open up State Services Committee meeting at 6:40 PM. Before we get into the resolutions, we are lucky enough to have Kim Kaplan here with us for one more meeting. Kim, is there anything you'd like to tell us about, you'd like to say?
I just wanted to thank you all for your support. Talking about the meeting. We all went through such a difficult time together, and we all went through it together. And I have such a deep appreciation for this body, county, for our county administrator. Thank you so much, legislator, and all. Thank you to our chairman, Chairman Leder. Just thank you all so much. This has been an amazing experience. I would like to say before Kim leaves for our last meeting, once again, Kim, you did an amazing job, you're exceptional. You deserve this retirement. I'm happy that you're doing it, but you deserve it. I hope you really enjoy your grandchild, and you don't need something strange. Thank you for everything you've done for us. I appreciate you so much.
Thank you for always being present. It's nice to have department heads and give reports and give updates.
Moving into our resolutions, authorizing agreement with Green County AMS Council Inc. for the AMT training 2023. That motion?
Second.
Second by Hooper and Lennon. All in favor?
Chairman Handel. Anybody know, has this, have we seen some benefit from this already?
Yeah, the first time the class was full.
Yep.
It was full. That was, we did, we did eight thousand, I think, first time, I need some, the total cost was $800 per person. The price is up, bumped a little bit, so we're doing 9,000 for 10 more people.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Authorizing agreement, Green County Family Planning, and mention my business, well, I queue.
I have a question about that. I'm a little concerned after seeing what the state is doing to us on Medicare, that this contract, this is pass-through money coming from New York State Department of Health, that they're gonna pay for it next year and the year after.
Well, we have an ability here, we are open here to make a decision on this, based on those kinds of circumstances.
Okay.
So at this point, yes.
It does say that it will automatically renew each year.
Well, we will have an option soon in our relationship.
We have the option to cancel.
Yeah. If we say nothing, it renews, but if we cancel, okay.
Thank you.
I'll move back.
I'll sit.
Second by legislator Blumer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Approving individual provider contracts, preschool special education program.
Davis.
Davis Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Approving related service provider contract, preschool special education program.
Tru.
Lucas. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Approving related service provider contract, preschool special education program.
Davis.
Davis. Hooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Increasing related service provider rate, preschool special education program.
Rivera.
Rivera.
Davis.
Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's Carrie. What you mandate, great place for the town, Green County Family Planning, and Green County Early Intervention.
Davis.
Davis.
Tru.
Tru. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Is there anything else for me for health services?
Davis give number seven. Number seven. Miley reimbursement.
Increase in parent milder reimbursement rate, preschool special education program.
Davis.
Lucas.
Davis and Lucas. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. I was actually just making sure everybody was awake tonight. Anything else to come before health services?
Mike Drummond Handel, on that last resolution, 1.164 million, that's what's left over, and so we have to put that towards 2023?
Yeah, it's, it's an accounting adjustment, because the funds are unexpanded, the grant is still in place.
But, it's asking, just asking. Thank you.
Anything else coming for health services?
Motion.
Leder and Blumer. Blumer and Blumer. We are done.
Thank you, Tammy. Like to call County Resources to order at 6:46. We have one proposed action item this evening, but before we do, we have the president of our college here, Dr. Drummer, if you'd like to talk about a few things.
Sure. Thank you very much.
So it's wonderful to be with all of you tonight, especially because I want to, I'm talking about a very happy outcome, and that is the Green County Care Spot. Started for the college in the fall of 2020, right at the heart of the pandemic. It was a little bit late, you know, as we were approaching the fall semester, I believe the committee meeting was after classes that already started, but we started advertising it, and so we really, you know, benefited, you know, in the spring of 2021. And I just want to give you a report, and maybe I'll just give a little summary as well, about, you know, some people, you know, may have forgotten where we were. But the initial grant for was $181,600. And we took 136,000 of that and put into the scholarship fund. There was also a $5,000 piece for emergency transportation, and that would be for bus, bus cards, gas money, gas cards, that kind of thing. We also had a fund that we called the Satellite Programs, and that was going to start some off-site training at both the Caro and Wyndham libraries. And for whatever reason, we haven't been able to get these off the ground yet, and so that, that money has been idle. However, what we've done with it is we have earmarked it for our Career Connections Program, which is the program whereby two juniors from every high school in Green County and every high school in Columbia County can take part in this experience to learn about different kinds of career options. And the way it started, it used to be called the Junior Career Institute, and we changed it to Career Connections. So now you start the program as a junior, and you continue the program as a senior. Here before, it was just, it was just juniors only, and then senior year, there was nothing going on. So we now have a continuous program, so that you start 26 juniors in high school, they continue into the senior year, we start 26 more juniors in high school. And the people who are seniors will graduate, and they will be offered the opportunity, if they've completed the Career Connections Program, they'll be offered the opportunity to receive a full semester scholarship to the college. So that $18,000 is, you know, we earmarked, you know, if you go into that funding, Kelly and Ressick, the director, you know, needs to cash it in. So we're really good there. We also had $13,600 in a program called Academic Coaching, and we thought this was a really great idea, and sometimes things that you think are great don't work out, there's no, no demand for it. So we asked from Administrator Groden if we could in fact move that $13,600 into the scholarship fund, and he said that we would be able to do that. So the update that I have for you tonight is that right now, since starting the program, 140 credit students have received assistance for the amount of $167,400. Eighteen non-credit students have received. Eighteen non-credit students have received assistance for $73.29. So right now, looking at what we've awarded, we also, you know, remember, we got the grant of $50,000 in the fall of 2022, which was, you know, incredible because it allowed us to really continue the program. So with that grant and the scholarships that we awarded in spring of '22 and fall of '22, we had some remaining funds at the end of December, $14,876. At the beginning of this spring semester, we had a lot of requests for assistance, and we have now expended $17,815. So we are in the red by $2,900, which is fine. We are going to take it out of another scholarship, you know, a non-restricted account that we have for the foundation. So basically, we're going to be at zero. But I just wanted to thank you all for this opportunity for the students of Green County. It has been a remarkable boon to so many of our students. The word has spread, you know, we've seen a lot of activity in it. Legislator Hobart asked me earlier tonight if a student had to fill out a FAFSA in order to receive the money, and I had to, you know, reach out to my team, you know, for verification. There is a question on the application form, have you filed with FAFSA? Which would be just information that would be used, but the answer is no. The student does not have to file a FAFSA, that the need is expressed in the form of an essay that we have. And then we have a committee that gets together and meets to determine, you know, who would be worthy of receiving this funding. So there's a special scholarship committee through our foundation. So I think it's been an incredible success. I'm very, very proud of it. I am just absolutely so grateful to all of you for giving us the opportunity to help our Green County students. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Earlier today, I did forward the testimonials that students have given. I think everybody by now is saying, I think we'll need to review that, which would back up the success of the program. If the board, there was funding in the budget for 2023 to continue the program at your discretion. You get to, the president to outline that, or you could start asking questions. Has he seen a little bit of an uptick in registration?
Yes, yes. On the first day of, first day of the spring semester, we were up 12%.
12%, that's huge.
And that's, you know, tomorrow is Census Day, so there's probably been, you know, we have a lot of movement, you know, between the first day of class and, you know, like now we're three to four weeks into the semester. But I am, I am very, very confident that we are going to be seeing a very healthy increase, which is very, very exciting. I also just wanted to mention one thing too, that on the Green Light to Enrollment Fund, the non-credit students who apply for A have to be pursuing a program that is going to give them employable skills. So we have started to offer a brand new program on residential wiring. It's being taught by a licensed electrician. The program has filled twice. Also, this semester classes full. So some of those students took advantage of the enrollment fund there, so we're really, really grateful for that. We have a lot of really wonderful things going on at the college right now. We just got a $308,000 grant from SUNY for our automotive technology program, so we're going to be able to get into electric vehicle training, which is great. As you probably heard, you know, we did receive from the New York Assembly, we received a billion dollars to expand our building construction technology program. So that's going to allow us to increase the footprint of our building and enroll more students with a focus on preservation. Because as we all know, our area is filled with historic homes that, you know, need people to be able to work on. It should be, you know, preserved and not get new. So that's been very, very exciting for us. We also have a new series of micro credentials that are stackable credentials that tap onto a program and give students a leg up when they go after a job. You know, they're short-term, usually within a semester or maybe two semesters, but students leave with those credentials intact and, you know, pretty much are immediately employed. So, you know, things are, things are exciting. We came through the pandemic. You know, as our colleague here said, you know, it was quite a, quite a time for all of us, but at the end of the day, the college is really stronger for it, and I'm really, really grateful again. Thank you all. So any questions about the scholarship program?
That's not much of a scholarship, but how's the other big capital improvement, like the budget requests? And your internet webpage, all that stuff is up and running, and, you know, is it faster? Or is it more beneficial for the students as well?
Absolutely. In fact, on February 15th, we go live with our brand new website. So looking forward to that debut. And yes, it's faster, better. The navigation is going to be incredible. If you know our website right now, it's pretty deployed. One can't find much. You have to really dig to find something. And so I, that was one thing that I wanted to correct the moment I walked in the door in July of 2019, because when I was interviewing for the job, I kept looking for documents, and I kept emailing my contact person, saying, where can I find this? Where can I find that? And I think he was like, he had it up to here with me, because I was asking so many questions, but it's just, it's not user-friendly. And the website is our front door. I mean, that is our, you know, that's who we are to the public. And students these days, they can't find something, they're going to Hudson Valley. It's like one click, if they don't get it, they're gone. So I'm really, really thrilled with that. Thank you.
What's the plan if we were able to throw funds at the county?
If you would be able to give us more money, you know, we will continue to, you know, offer the scholarship program. I think that's the greatest need from what we've seen in the past two and a half years. And, you know, but of course, we would entertain other ideas.
I think we should continue what we've been doing with it.
I was amazed to see the increase.
I like to, I like to throw something out there. This electrician program that you said first, I knew it was gonna be successful. Your second one, it's full. Why, why can't we, you know, throw some money at a trade-type education that suits our students of Green County? Instead of the scholarship, can't we throw some more money towards tuition on some of these trade programs?
Trade programs that are within the college?
Yeah, within, like the wiring program.
We talk like the green light?
Designated as a trade scholarship.
As a trade scholarship, exactly, because that's.
Through all trades, whether you're doing psychology or you're doing anything.
Well, I'm talking more of a blue collar type trade. That's where we tried to move to. We tried to, we talked about.
You could have a portion of the funds being.
Construction.
Automotive mechanic construction. You got your culinary program, right?
Have a culinary.
You don't, you don't.
Nursing program.
Nursing. I'm thinking more like electrical. We talked about electrical.
I want to segregate that, though. I don't think I'd want a student who wants to go for nursing to be left out of the chance of getting a scholarship because it's not considered a blue collar trade. I think that.
Well, I mean, if you look at our.
And we certainly have a need for healthcare professionals.
Yeah, we do, and quite honestly, the foundation has a number of scholarships.
That's not what I was saying, but anyway, we'll end it there.
What were you saying?
The students that we have here in Green County, we try to come up with programs at the college that would make them successful. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying if we could maybe give them a little, you know, a little bump as to like.
Well, what we could do is we could.
There's a lot of money in that, and a lot of our students here in the county could do that. I'm not sure about other programs that they're, be able to do it. Here, we know they can.
Sure. We could earmark a certain amount of the money for, as you call it, the blue collar trade.
Right.
And for money for people who want to go into professional education.
The adopted budget for '23 had a $100,000 earmark for continuation of scholarship.
Okay. Well, keep it the same then. It'll all filter down, hopefully.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Maybe even, Carrie, to your point, my pitch was the foundation, we kind of gave the thesis, but the foundation really came up with the criteria for who is going to be worthy. And we have the foundation which kind of specified more toward power.
Well, it might filter down. Just, I would leave it the way it is. Just let those students apply.
It's been very, very.
Yeah, those testimonials.
The testimonies are heartfelt and has infected our enrollment.
Yeah, let them apply for it, hopefully, hopefully they're considered.
To help enroll.
Right.
I don't know if we got enough kids to do that.
Oh, we've been going down a little bit, yeah. You know, percentages go up and down, but enrollment numbers have been going down steadily for the last several years. Now, this year was the first year I've seen it actually tick up a little bit.
In the past, since between 2011 and 2021, Columbia Green lost 34% in enrollment. And that wasn't just Columbia Green, that was, that was pretty much statewide. The community college sector as a whole has been declining enrollment.
And the state and the Excelsior brand, which pretty much said anybody here, you want a little four-year school, we'll take your fortune.
Yeah.
So that kind of hurt the community colleges as well.
Yeah, that hurt.
So to see our community college now tick up a little bit, that's a testament to their leadership.
Thank you.
Whole program.
Have a great team.
I do think the new courses that you've been offering is, I do think the reputation of Columbia Green has definitely accelerated. You know, it used to, I know kids in character who say it was 13, 14, you know, and, but you don't hear that anymore. It's now, it has a good reputation, and people are offering more diverse courses.
Yes.
Really good. Thank you. It's nice to see.
Any else? If we do this, are you gonna change the name to the Green Columbia?
It's always good to go through a replanning exercise every now. GC3, we just call it GC3.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I didn't start that.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll take that to the board.
All right, everybody, we've got the one resolution. This is reappointing our member to the Potavia Hill Wardship District Board, Mr. Raymond Bentley.
Yeah.
Overblow and Thorington. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Any other business to come before County Resources? Thorington motions closed. Seconded by Overblow. We are closed.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call Public Safety Committee to order at 7:03 PM. We only have one proposed action item. Before we get into that, tonight we have with us Sheriff Kuzminski.
I'm going last. I say after Paris.
Good evening, everybody. All right, so for the month of January, we had 129 civil attempts, served 90 civil papers, issued 193 traffic tickets, investigated 28 traffic accidents, made 34 arrests and 60 WIRS. We handled 484 calls for service and made 357 traffic stops. On January 1st, '23, the starting jail population was 35. As of January 31st, it was also 35. The high for the month being 43. Corrections officers did 37 transports traveling 1,525 miles, totaling 89 hours moving 45 inmates. We have two state-ready inmates in our custody. And so good news in the jail, we are starting to, our, start our accreditation process, and the accreditation team is coming on the 15th.
Correct.
So that's some good stuff. Our color guard, Representative Green, Representative of our county, at the swearing-in of United States Congressman Marcus Malinera. Thank you, legislator Lucas. Last month, and so already, as most of you know, his office is gonna be in Leeds.
Right.
Not yet.
It's not open yet, but it will be.
Our impacted citizens program is adding a new tool to assist their mission, and it's called the Matters Network app. And it will give our team the ability to offer immediate telemedicine evaluations, as well as electronic referrals to services for those suffering from addictions. So instead of waiting that time to get the referral, we can actually link up face-to-face with a doctor at the scene of some of these things. Pretty interesting stuff. Last thing I have is our body cameras are getting close to being active. Training will start by the end of the month. As far as the cars, the cameras in the cars go, there's still some technical difficulties, right, John? There's some connectivity issues. Basically, download speeds are not, if one car pulls in, it operates the way it should. If two cars pull in, it slows the whole system down, so there's compatibility issues with the gear. But they're working on it, and I understand it will, should be corrected.
So I have. Sheriff, for you, are you privy to any drug arrests that are not made by your department? Any state police makes drug arrests, drug busts from drug dealers?
Mostly, unless it's something that's, you know.
Okay.
I would say 90.
I'm just saying, I mean, you give us a good report on stops, traffic incidents, or whatever. I mean, we got a major problem across this entire country with these drugs.
I could tell you.
It'd be nice to kind of say, hey, we're on, we're also fighting the drug. We haven't given up. Like, sometimes I think some people think, basically, the public is giving up on.
Well, okay, right now, I know of at least five active narcotics investigations that we're going, we are pursuing. Problem with really giving a lot of information on them is they take time. They move around, the buys take time.
Yeah.
Sometimes they have products, sometimes they don't, sometimes you get arrested for something else.
Yeah.
And they could drag out a year, two years easily. And if it's federal, if it's bumped up, then it's a five-year sometimes investigation.
Right.
And if they move it out of the state, you know, then we're talking about seizures outside, you know, and some of these things, the wheels are turning, but very slowly. May not get the local press that it really deserves, but, but it's there. If I can add something. But right now, off the top of my head, I could think of at least five that are ongoing.
Just a suggestion.
Anything else for the sheriff?
Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Frisby, you have anything tonight for probation?
Don't be confused. I'm not going to be interested in the sheriff. Thank you. Since there are a few people which I am not familiar, I'll just introduce myself. I'm Alan Frisby. I am the director of the probation department. This is my 16th year as the director, and I'm in my 42nd year as a member of the probation department. So I've been around a good while, have seen quite a few things occur here in the state and the county. Can't say that all of them have been the better over that time period. There's been a lot. And I'm a member of the New York State Council of Probation Administrators, the current vice president and the past treasurer. So with my colleagues around the state and other probation director titles, we share a lot of information in our various meetings, and despite the size differences between, say, Green County and Westchester or New York City, it's amazing the commonality of the problems. So that has been a very interesting thing in my time. And when somebody becomes a member of an organization, I think they all find out the same thing. We have a staff of 12, two support staff and 10 professional physicians, and all of the professional physicians, including myself, are sworn peace officers, and all are sworn and armed peace officers. I did a quick numbers run before I came up. And as of now, we have 216 adult criminal cases. 97 are felons and 119 are misdemeanors, and there are 21 juveniles. The advent of bail reform a few years ago has led to an increase in the use of electronic monitoring bracelets. And as of today, we have thirteen active units for our transdermal alcohol devices. So they can put on somebody's ankle and they pick up on whether somebody's been using alcohol or not, reports back to the monitoring company. And those devices are nine dollars a day. We have nine current global positioning system units in place at seven dollars a day. An officer is assigned as an on-call officer for a week's time to answer the calls at night. If there's a response, then they have to go out, change a bracelet. If there's a problem, they may have to answer calls from the state police. They have to send the state police or some other agency, sheriff's office, and I don't mean to exclude sheriff's office, sorry about that. If there's an immediate response determined if somebody's potentially in danger, if their bracelet says that they are not to be, or the court order, or specifically says, they are not to be within, you say, five hundred feet of a certain residence, and their bracelet is tracking him as if they are on that path and somebody is potentially in danger, then we make a call to the dispatch center and say, have an officer go over there for that person's safety. So there is an on-call probation of certain monitors, so. Rotation changes weekly. And we are in the process now, we're transitioning from the current GPS vendor that we are using to a different system. Devices are a little bit different, but the cost will drop from seven dollars a day to about three dollars a day. So we'll see. There. So that's basically where we stand. Questions?
Who pays for the cost of those bracelets? Is it the, the parents? If it's a juvenile, is it the person who has it, or is it the captain that picks up on it?
It depends. The bail reform statutes mandated that it shall not be an expense to somebody who's in a pre-trial capacity like that. So anybody who has been charged in the defense and the judge says, I need you to have this device on, that is a county expense. If they're already on probation and it's imposed as a probation condition, then it becomes the offender's expense. We've managed to try to charge the parents for juveniles, but I suppose an interesting legal argument could be made. How can you charge the juvenile and their families, but an adult offender that's on bail for these, that's in public expense. So I'm surprised we haven't been challenged on that. We've got very few juvenile units.
What if they're found guilty? Does that make them liable for the expense?
Retroactively.
None?
So you have a felon and he gets five years.
For his probation.
Right, for his probation. And he does three of the five. That still stays a felony. It's, it's still felony probation. It doesn't get.
Correct.
Reduced to misdemeanor, which would be three years or less.
Correct. There, sometimes they make some plea bargaining stipulations in which if somebody is successful for a while, then go back and change it. Makes for some difficult record keeping to do that. Uh, what's normally done is they'll give somebody a shot at what's called interim probation. And that's basically a trial at probation. So they will plead guilty to, say, a felony with the stipulation that if they go back in a year's time after their interim probation and have done well, then they will reduce the charge perhaps to a misdemeanor. And it's, the final sentence may be three years rather than the five it would have been. A lot of times that's done in conjunction with drunk court treatment. Uh, and then interim is maxed out at a year, unless the person is involved in drunk court, then it can be extended to three years.
Post-trial, are they paying that?
Yes. Otherwise, in a sentence, then there's a need to put it on, and that would be.
So Alan, all of these, the bracelets and that, that's all the considered alternatives to incarceration, correct? Now, our newer legislators that are here, we were, we were quoted as saying we didn't do A T I in this county and Alan Frisby gave us a, a good example of some of the alternatives to incarceration that we've been using in the county.
If we're hoping two hundred people a day, that's an alternative right there.
Exactly. Um, one other question, like, say, part of their probation, um, it's like D W I and they have an interlock device. Does that go, that fee goes to the person operating the vehicle, correct? Does that, does that fall under D M D with the driver's assessment?
The court, excuse me, can mandate that the offender pay, they can set it up that it's a partial payment. Or if need is shown, the company, as in the interlock company, can pay. So, most of it works under pay.
Okay.
As long as they can, the department makes a determination that the person is able to afford the device.
Is there anyone doing community service?
Yes. I'm not sure right off. We haven't had as many of those cases as would have liked. Those numbers have shrunken over the years. And there are discussions with a different attorney about it, because most of them come as part of the. Our money that we get for that program is five thousand dollars or thereabouts. It's been almost the same for an extended period of time, probably ten or so years. And the general operating money that we get from the state to fund probation services has been stuck at a hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars over ten. At one time, there was state law that probation departments were to be reimbursed up to forty-six and a half or so percent of their operating expenses by the state, and I just dwindled and dwindled. Two thousand and ten, they did away with that and went to the state block grant. Grant amount stayed the same despite the other expenses that made current salary increases and.
Now, does PINs fall underneath the juvenile stuff also, as far as the term?
PINs does, but as of a few years ago, we are no longer the lead agency for PINs diversion. So that goes through, um, the youth bureau and Department of Social Services. If their efforts to keep those cases out of court aren't successful, and the person ends up on probation as a PIN, then we will pick up. It was being personally made of supervision. They've expanded the age of them to eighteen for that, as well as they raised the age of juvenile delinquency, and they just raised the age effect at the end of December. The minimum age now for juvenile delinquents is twelve, unless it's a homicide.
Any other questions for Alan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, from the nine-one-one center, we have Dan King.
January is a relatively stable month. Thankfully, there were five hundred and forty-eight EMS calls, one hundred and sixty-five fire calls, one thousand three hundred and twenty-five police calls, and eight hundred and thirty other types of calls. We answered the nine-one-one N administrative phones four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine times. So, and.
Thirty-one days.
And it was stable. And so, four mutually fire calls, uh, in the month, twenty-five EMS move-up calls where we relocated the ambulances to cover someone else's district in this county or another county. Um, and we had one hazmat response incident, uh, in January. Those are the numbers. The only other thing really going on is the Hunter Town Hall Tower Project continues to go slowly, but we are still, like, we'll be on track for that to be operational in April. All I got. Questions?
Eric, I mean, I think one for you, Sean. How are we doing what we usually planned for EMS? Uh, so far, there's been some movement there, um, covering districts, a couple of agencies. Anything, anything getting up in writing? Is the policy?
Uh, nothing is set yet. It's still kind of fluid throughout the nine-one-one center. We're moving stuff around, trying to figure out where the best areas are. Some of the, uh, agencies are concerned they'll go only to their district lines. Uh, other ones will move pretty much wherever you need them to at any moment in time. So it's figuring all a little intricate work, you know, to get something a little more solid.
Man, I know it's been working a little bit better. I just haven't seen it put out. It's, it's.
Cause there's so much of the gray areas with a lot of the movement, it's hard to pick down.
Does that have to go through remote though, Pat? Do they have to, like, have it and then put in a deed for it through the state? Or we can do that in the most, thus in the.
No, usually. We could do that under normal mutually, um, it worked throughout the.
Realistically, we're doing it now through dispatchers.
Yeah.
Right, but there's nothing saying. Yeah, here's, here it is in writing.
I think it might be wise for us perhaps to call another meeting with the chiefs of the municipalities' ambulances and.
Try to set up something.
You know, maybe have, carry on that discussion that we had, like, almost a year ago.
And.
And, you know, and see where we're at again with them and, and the towns and the town ambulances and.
Yeah. If you try to.
See what.
John, we'll try to coordinate something, get administrations in.
Membership up though? I mean, and it, is it still a uphill fight?
Up and down. Um, agencies, they're still seeing people leaving, uh, for other career, career paths and stuff like that, but I think the class has helped a little bit. Uh, we're hoping they should, they ditched up. One of the E M T classes just finished, or is just finishing, and the other one is due, I think, in another month or so. Uh, so hopefully we get some of those new members starting to progress up and, and feel some shifts. It's working.
Definitely.
I just want to check.
So Sean, is that something we can set up again?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, I don't know fast, but I think last time we didn't have a very good turnout either.
I, I think all the administrators came to back.
The administrators.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I, Darrell, I think we had some success on the mountaintop. I think there is more of a official partnership with the, with the mountain top town that there wasn't previously on that. But I, I, we certainly can send the invitation again, but I, as I recall, we didn't have, and Mark Evans came from G N. Figure agency, but. You should, five years is B L S.
The ambulance.
B L S is transport side.
Right, the transport side.
Correct.
Yeah, I would, I would like to get an update about that as well, you know. Are they, what are they seeing? Where are the people on the ground?
The questionnaire needs to be changed. Last time we had asked the different town agencies how many ambulances they had. But that was a question that really didn't matter, cause some of it, it more matters how many crews they put on the road.
Right.
You know, so that's fact.
How many people can be transported?
Doesn't tell you how many they can get.
Sean, do the, uh, those towns that have operations fulfill or submit an annual report to their towns?
I believe most of them do. Um, we could reach out and check on that.
Which really has to get supervisors and the ambulance coordinators who are in charge of the town together and come. You know, as a whole group.
That I would recommend a Wednesday special meeting in Carroll, a little bit more geography present as well.
We did a, uh, Italian chief meeting about six months ago in Carroll, at the emergency services center, very well attended. Um, if we could get something like that in the basement.
Sean and Emerald together.
Yeah, we got them very well attended, that video. What's it, yeah, if we get something here or that, that would be great.
I also have twenty-seven fire companies compared to seven transporting E M S.
Yeah, understood, understood.
But that, but that's why you have to involve supervisors as well, because, you know, they work together to, to make the system work, not just one side.
I think they all need to be invited.
Right, absolutely.
Yep. Okay, under the proposed action item. Um, authorizing the contract with Green County Deputies Association.
Martin Azo Handel.
Martin Azo Handel. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And this is the deputies, not the C O's. The C O's are, they voted down the agreement two months ago, Sean, and a half. So it's still on the drawing board. Anything else to come before, uh, public safety? We don't need a executive session.
Executive session.
No, we need executive session.
Yes.
We do. I'll take, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
What is that for?
Litigation, potential litigation.
Litigation.
Linda.
Yes.
These are grants.
It was Rivera, Paul.
Correct.
To sponsor the high school musical.